And this is the conference. Over. The whole team decision, I think. Everybody, I'm sorry this morning. Pray that you continue to bless us. Lord, thank you for opportunities that you've given us in every day to live your life perfectly. I want to pray that you, with each and every person affected by the flooding, know this. Thank you for our, and bless our first responders, we say, and continue to preach often times within self. Lord, please bless us all, because God makes us. I pray that you just divide. To the people. With your blessings. And. Better. I. I pray that we. Thank you so much, Mary. I. But. Well, I. Send this message. I want to give you an end of the year. I thought the mission was coming to support me now. We have a lot of hours. So let me put it on. I got through this morning with grass. It's definitely not my friend at all. Uh. And we would drive. We would possibly learn from the one that was all about the community. Um. Trying to get that we came to complete it. In a moment. In the. Um. Yeah, it. We need to be in the community. Yes, or anything. When they made that road, over walking here. I can only pass. It is the. We live them. And we. Easy. Um. Well. I have a position on doing to the community and. Don't look, I don't think it's gonna be done overnight. Everything at the time, but so involved with them.
Yeah. After the last meeting, the commissioner's four. But. We have presented to the constituents, thank you to the office, for putting the county website. Really, I appreciate that. Support citizens to be able to access information and other missions, so that the building. I mean, after we. On the chief school. And how to serve our community and spend and allocate. I did. That work following the first track budget, I wrote that I started to look. So I started. And there were not many things that I. To the public, I mean, also, for people are all aware. Be, I believe the budget, they're. We should maybe. As a taxpayer, I am someone. I don't even know what word to use, but as I'm looking at budget, I don't. For this, you know, for. Or self, if it's like you. Okay, sorry. There are not too many people from down in town who are either in the library and that and that is such kind of. Blessing in their perspective. So maybe. Just very hard to get into, we will see. Yet our home employees have a plan under this beyond the reality, I've never. A million dollars on the. Longevity, two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. And cost of living increases. Of. Our defense knowledge. Along with the instead of the road. Cream also showing which is what it does instead, they struggle to have an office to provide everything, especially in services. Give citizens. Um. We. Sweet with several posters, when you have a no to use, a person to. And so long, that it's salvation. We're pretty, they're really not enough to not help us. H P D facility, jail, we need to come out, two point three hundred dollars, just thousands of benefits. Of lots and then there's. There's certainly have. Oh, I understand. If the baby gets a seat. Lot of businesses, thank you.
All right, we have.
Listen, I'm sorry. Come here, I think I'm proud of you. Uh, my phone videos. Yeah, I'm in the beginning. The media have especially. Not following. I follow. And possibly the emergency fishing, the part of the tissues of. Of the model. But I don't hear that. I can't hear you have a position was to take time to see. Now, it's really about the topic we see. I didn't know. When there's so many. What was going to say. The only thing I said, I think it will be. For you, that. My mouth broken. Finally, if it is your intention, I would like to just say, as a citizen. That. When we were in the meeting, we had a map. We just went down. That look at the gentleman there, this and the leading news sometimes, and it was unit that related to the political. Uh, the top man that looks to be the one. And Erica. There's I'm promoting it, it's the take care of. They do set. To the now. She should be willing to put in the position of this versus this. It's, let's say, everyone who's there for the years. The board is in habits. Try to accomplish that.
Okay, that's very good. Since. Passion. But I'm ready to consider that on third of eight. The you, we third to have been recording. Already in the Asian operations field. In my, I'm having to approve. A little bit, little bit of this, also. Because I can bring to larger segment, I can bring to public discussions. On my members say, I oppose, unless you carry. I'm before. It's better than accepting. Forget getting free. And to order. Calling the public. County has received a change, maybe definitely free. Decision. In the light of the president, to the essence, Sam. And as third, I don't think. Said we call for. To self to the mission and all of them. Also, probably here yourself, through. And all. As a, then I. It's a great. Where you wait. You want to go one by, never, the other. Yeah, I was. Here, mother's. In that year, speaking with great father. The town. Isn't it? It is we. So when you're not out. If all of them be. They will be, we keep what. You may say. All time, I don't know, probably not feel out in the way, off, off, on. But. This way, that we. Then you're done with that. You will. He, he's our. These are like, I remember my. Yeah, this is sort of considering the last year. Um, it's I don't. Of. Eight. Fifty. Last year. Um, video, I mean, it's like after. We want this thing. I was seeing. So you. Serious. Questions. Hey, I need some pressure to me. Um. Uh. All the. State about the. So much tradition. Uh, we do. Following up the rule of our extension, it's very well. Now, we see it's another period of ongoing training for the sort of. Also, you get better enforcement. The vehicles of the dedicated policy. Uh, it's not as the one calling the kind of always do come together or get it. Yes, they will talk about it. You know, our, our whole picture is the, the, the. We can continue to have a songwriter. The clinical raise by. You know, our career, the verbal less, the higher, higher so rate, the greater service. And rated you about number four. Kirk guy here. We go through there, the city and the county department, put down. We can continue. We have to have four classes. You know, there are thirty three year old, twenty nine year old, twenty four year old. You know, the new conference, the county. Purpose with the writer. We. We added another purpose, it's thousand dollars. Right. We do. So. That's. For all kind of, we have a. Go there and. I agree with the student, so everybody, whoever did this one raise. You will feel. We're. So we kind of, we're like. We have a. We got the ready room to stack. They fit. We were in the indoor room, about six two. We just get bad and would fit. I mean, I made that. I think. Here. He has been. They call. You tell us. Me, the one thought about that side area. There be here. We're going to, if they were all vertical. But yes, they. And then all the, that's all good, this is the, they might make money. All of it. Uh, we'll get very. We're fitting on. On this side. Then really. We'll be on this. And. You know, they go with the public. They may. We just see. Support of the community, back there. The food, the definitely. Free expenses. What's missing? Oh. Oh, good. So, you know. First, we started with the family that they're here and not. You know. You can measure cleverly, all. In the wire. Good. So they measure if it's. We're funded by their. And so we. Wanted that. Uh, the one, you know, when all of these places, then they'll have a hopeful setting, pretty. And then we're. Here, we're open. Both. And I would go by, it's really big. Other than the division. All positions are. Right. Exactly. We. Necessary. At very important. I don't. It's time I create videos for. Even today, before it's not active, again, opinion now. Required number of seeing the. It's anyone that can create. To make a far more difference. We think significantly bad. I know this is a period of decision, right? That's. Understand, I mean. That. Oh. It actually. They're ready. I'm. On. The position that. Uh, uh, here. Needs. It. It. Of. Anything. Thank you. But. That is not the best. No. If you can get a sad now, in. I can. Or almost all. Yeah. But it's. Speaking. Now, there we. We can. We have a. Your preference has. I can. The thing one, as we. Uh, I see too, as. They don't, they don't. Yeah. Ready. I'm here, it's whatever. For. Their. Definitely. And all of them. I'm hearing. Also, I don't. That they. We create. Says. We could both say. On, if ever say ask. Who.
Okay, yeah, I'm. I'm giving an apple. It's okay. Thank you, yeah, I'm. It's for a new solution. So it's good, he has been believed this proposed, assuming to be opposed to the convention. Um, being in favor of going on. And we're, we know only reason. Is because I do not believe that the test here to be dealt. We have a proposed, yeah, we need this. Important for us. I'm in no way in any fashion saying that the fire department is not. But. And I listen to the comments from the presenters, from one thing that I never prefer is that they are sending people to respond and very tall, it's going to be in the county. In every city and, uh, under. Yeah, in our community. So they're already on the ball, on. Timely, efficient, effective. There isn't a problem with the services that are. My decision, which is that once, put in, right, et cetera. You know. Uh, opportunities for all to them, in the E S C two. I know that we have an operation center. And stuff, we might not quickly, they're involved, the one working ahead. Remember, early on, when you, there are many things. When you say, also, by our purpose, my friend, push, and I thought. The virtual, my thoughts swell, there's past and sales chats, constantly stop, getting sure, that we know. The hospital, at least we read out. But services, we need the R C, it's only if Donald Rodwin. Called to the legislature and made that happen with yours. By the current score, there is no need for anyone since.
Now, okay, but. I'm very, I should say, I. Oh. Here. Thank you. I. That's it, so I can. Take. That's our thing. Of you. You. For. Visions at the. Center. And gossip. Raiders. I.
This law. A and I will. First of them. But the nation's editor, particularly. Back. Comment and. In with.
What do you think? Second. Oh. Seven. I'm very, say, I. Oh. I'm saying. Or. You know, to land. We call. Grand. Strike. It's. Oh. You're ready to. And. See. All. That's. And then. The moment. Oh. Um. That's. I wish I. Oh. Here. And certainness, certainly. You know. Uh, this. This is. So I gave. In. When I. You know, straight. Which. Thank you. Which way. Oh. See. I can measure it down. That. Maybe. I say. So. Oh. Actually. There is that. I. I. For. Time. This is. I give. That's. Off. You too. So. So we're. I mean. I'm
I'm sorry? Yes, because we're doing a five year contract instead of annually. So it's a five year contract. Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. First point Parker, this was a lot of gene, I think, but I pretty as a father uh, briefly of uh, been that Russian, we talk pretty so I the Russian yeah, we look at I mean what kind of game I mean, it was we told you this was one, one to be for this well, it's three, four, seven, four, thirty, forty, three four, six, eight, with my and you know, we were my brother and we uh, never all of the media, uh, five you know, very really one three, eight, two very with the blue water both clear, but we hope we all agree, pretty good games and a big water breach of four uh, it's hurt its waste um uh really below the bottom of the bridge uh, sound now, it is literally straight across the bank art yeah, all of those uh one of the wait, 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 so it depends, sorry, yeah, yeah. I agree, uh, yeah. Yes. on on uh it's a lot I'm trying to face this is something okay for me, you know, the last uh, by in in May, or will they stay they have so so the it's I'm looking it's sad yeah, it's sad I say aye, I very um, even there I have questions.